We need three more for a quorum. Where are you everybody? Okay, now we're down to two. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we're still waiting for a quorum, but we do have a number of presentations today. So, and there's Mrs. Chikis here. Are we, is that it? No, one more. The, so we're gonna start the presentations and as soon as we definitely have a quorum, then we'll start the regular agenda. Good morning, I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter, President Pro Tem of the Council. This is, or shortly will be, a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, April 28th, 2000. And we're going to begin with some very special presentations. For those who may wonder who comes first and who comes second, it's the order in which the council member showed up in the council chamber this morning. So Ms. Mizakowski was first. Second person. All right, then, I'm gonna go ahead and we'll go to the second one. Mr. Hernandez has two introductions, I believe.
Madam President, members of the council, I have two presentations to make today, and the first one I was gonna make is, is a resolution, basically declaring the month of the young child. And I think we have some members here, representative of the month.
Mr. Hernandez, while they're coming up, as we now have ten, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll, and this will all be officially part of the meeting. Call the roll, please.
Brinson Chik, Fiera Galanter, Goldberg Hernandez, Holden, Mizakowski, Pacheco Bede, Ali Thomas, Wener Chux, Walters Ferraro, ten members present the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Now, this really is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, and I call on Mr. Hernandez for his presentation.
No, thank you, and with me today is Commissioner Wesley Greenwood, who basically will be accepting the resolution on behalf of the Commission of Children, Youth, and Their Families, as well as Linda Britt?
Anita.
Anita Britt, from...
Children's Hospital.
The Children's Hospital. In members of the council, a lot of people haven't, well, do know that the city of Los Angeles has basically put a tremendous emphasis with our Commission of Children, Youth, and Their Families in recognizing youth and children as the future of the city. There's no question in my mind that Los Angeles made a commitment to the welfare of young children, and this commitment extends to their families. I can remember when we didn't have such a commission doing this kind of work. But when we talk about the future of Los Angeles, we're talking about the children of Los Angeles. And the violence that they have to grow up in, in a city that sometimes I describe as a city of smog and cement. You need someone advocating on their behalf, and that's what this month is about. So what I have before me is a resolution declaring the month of the young child. Whereas the city of Los Angeles and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association of Education of Young Children are celebrating April as the month of the young child. Whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and their families within our community state, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas the future of our community depends on the quality of the early childhood experience provided to young children today. Whereas high-quality early childhood services represent a worthy commitment to our children's future. Therefore, the adoption of this resolution, the City Council of the city of Los Angeles hereby declare April as the month of the young child in Los Angeles, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children in their community. Members of council, I also want to recognize you, each and every one of you, because you've displayed in time after time, a commitment to the children of the city of Los Angeles. And again, the Commission and Anne Bressard, who basically represents our childcare and early childhood development experiences here at the city, should be recognized for their work.
I again can't tell you enough how much we appreciate this resolution that you have presented to the Commission. There are a number of dedicated people, not only on the staff, but certainly commissioners, who want you to know that they appreciate what you as the council are doing. What you do for us, what you do for the kids of Los Angeles is an investment in their future, and we certainly appreciate you for what you do for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one more presentation to make. And I'd like to call up Councilmember Jackie Goldberg, if I may, for this presentation. I'm not sure if she was expecting me to do that. But tomorrow's gonna be a very special day in the city of Los Angeles. The Episcopal Church is basically gonna be inducting or, a new bishop, and this is a hard word for me to say, but it's quagitor. And a bishop-quagitor is the bishop-elect. For the Episcopal Church, we've seen the leadership of Bishop Orsh in regards to their involvement in the community, and the fact that the Episcopal Church, particularly in the communities that I represent and Councilmember Goldberg represents, has had a very strong presence. And what you need to know is that the bishop-quagitor-elect is Father John Bruno. And Father Bruno's been the provost at the Cathedral Center by Echo Park, and has played a very active role. Not only is he a member of the Teigs family from Teigs Restaurant, but Father Bruno is the next Burbank police officer. Father Bruno is the next Kansas City Chiefs...
Denver.
Oh, Denver, football player, Denver Broncos. But I knew Father Bruno as an activist who was trying to empower communities to an organization called UNO. You probably remember Father Bruno coming and advocating for youth when we were dealing with a thing called Hope...
Hope and Youth.
Hope and Youth. But I also know him as someone who's established strong community contacts with the Central American community in terms of economic development with the street vending district at Echo Park. He put together the, basically the credit union for the Episcopal Church that helped finance a lot of those new entrepreneurs. And a reflection of his support that is with us today, you need to understand, is he's gonna be the bishop of five counties. Not only Los Angeles and Ventura...
San Bernardino.
San Bernardino, Riverside...
Santa Barbara.
And Santa Barbara.
And Orange.
And Orange, six counties. But here to recognize him being inducted as a new bishop is Martin Barahona, who's the bishop of El Salvador. He's present with us. Sergio Barranza?
Barranza.
Barranza, who is the bishop- Barranza, who is the bishop of Mexico City. And Silvestro Romero, who's the bishop of Belize. For the Episcopal Diocese, tomorrow's gonna be a great day in the City of Los Angeles. For Angelino's, tomorrow's a great day because fellow Angelino has been basically nominated to be future bishop. And he's someone who has a reputation in the community as someone who's been involved with the people of the community and is a true representative of the angels of the City of Los Angeles. So having said that, I'd like my colleague Jackie Goldberg to say a few words, and then we'll be presenting a resolution to Father John Bruno declaring April 29th Father John Bruno Day.
Thank you. I just wanna thank Mike for letting me join in this presentation. Anybody who has ever come into contact with Father John, as he's affectionately called, absolutely everywhere, knows that this is a man of the people. And that's a phrase that gets used a lot, but sometimes it's pretty hollow. In this case, it is well, well-earned. He is a person who people admire and respect, people who find comfort when they need comfort from people who can, that all of us can go to and say, you know, there's this problem in the community, we just don't know what to do. Will you help? I have never one time said that to him and heard him say, "In any way I can, anytime." Here, let me give you all my phone numbers. And is, "I'm available 24 hours a day," is his answer. "I'm available 24 hours a day." And that kind of leadership, that kind of inspirational leadership is going to, I think, make a huge difference in the, in the community of Los Angeles. We've always had excellent leadership in Los Angeles, but this, I think, is gonna ratchet it up just one more notch. Because he's a big man, and his heart is as big as a man as he is. And I am very, very thrilled and excited and anticipate with great joy the leadership that you're going to bring to this city and to all of these counties that you are now going to try to provide inspiration and leadership to. And I know that each and every one of us, regardless of our faith or lack of faith, will find in him a leader that we can follow on matters of social justice and equality in this society.
I shared with some of Father Bruno's guests earlier at the reception that it's a real miracle, because all 15 council members signed this resolution, and the mayor. And it's one of those resolutions that means a lot to all of us, declaring April 29th Father John Bruno Day.
I wanna especially thank God, and I wanna thank my family. And then I wanna thank Mike Hernandez and Jackie Goldberg, and every single one of the council people who work so hard in this city to make this a better place for people to live. Having been born here and grown up in East LA, I know what important thing it is that you do economic development, all of you. I thank you for being willing to be people who stick their necks out at times and make things change. I thank you for being willing to be people who sometimes are called names and had disparaging things said about them. I know who you truly are. You're a people of spirit and kindness and graciousness. I just pray that I have the strength to do this through the power of God. And I thank especially my brother bishops-to-be, I'm gonna be a bishop tomorrow, my brother bishops-to-be from these Central American countries. If we can think about what the future in this city's gonna be like, we're gonna be the heart and the center of the Pacific Rim. And I pray that in relationship with these people and people in the Anglican Church throughout the Pacific Rim, that we can develop a way of life that meets the needs of people and meets the needs of the city, making it a place of abundance, not a place of pain or fear. Thank you. Mike has asked me to introduce my family. This is my wife, Mary, our daughter, Janelle, over here, and our grandson, Christopher. Back over here somewhere is our son, Philip, and our grandson, Thomas, and our son, Brent, and my sister and brother-in-law, the infamous Tex. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. And when you're done up there, we're going to call Mr. Pacheco. Okay, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President and colleagues, we're here today to celebrate the weekend of Fiesta Broadway. And one of the great things about our city is the diversity that we have within our boundaries with all the different ethnic groups, and one of them being the Latino community. We celebrate Fiesta Broadway to sort of highlight the contributions of the Latino community here in the city. And this year's queen is someone who's been a great part of the Mexican community, a great asset to the Latino community. And for the 2000 Fiesta Broadway, our queen really began at a very young age, in elementary school. And if many of you are wondering what all the cameras are here for when there's no police chief here, no district attorney here to talk about Rampart, it's for her. She is the highlight today. Her name is Veronica Castro. One of the most important things about Veronica Castro that I personally feel is the best thing about a lot of our leaders is, not only has she managed to accomplish so many things in her profession, but she managed to also continue her education. And I'll get to that. But at first, I wanted you to know that at a very young age, elementary school, she was her summer queen for her class. And going to school and continuing to strive in the field of entertainment and education. She, in 1970, began her television career, and in 1974, began her film career. But not only did she do that, she received her license in Mexico for broadcasting and production, as well as a degree in international relations. She's worked in broadcasting, theater, film, direction, production, musicals, music. Her commitment to her art has characterized her as one of the most prolific women in Latin entertainment. And whereas her outstanding portrayal of the lead character in the soap opera, Los Ricos También lloran, gave her... You know, all those clapping are city staffers who recognize. I just want you to know that. They all ask permission to come down and see Veronica Castro, because she's very well-liked here in the building. Gave her international recognition in over 40 Latin American countries. Her life model of working hard and her passionate dedication to art has inspired many entertainers to join the art world, including her son, Christian, who's also a widely and world-recognized entertainer. So on behalf of the City Council, I would like to present with one of our resolutions, recognizing her for all these achievements. And I wanna bring up, we have Alex Padilla and Mike Hernandez here, our colleagues. We'll hand her this with our warmest wishes and hopes that she will visit us again here in the City of Los Angeles as our queen for this weekend of Fiesta Broadway. But this resolution recognizes her lifelong achievements and her contributions to not only Mexico, but to all the Latinos and all the Mexicanos here in the City of Los Angeles. Senora Castro?
Madam President, members of the Council, I can tell some of you don't watch Spanish-language TV or Spanish-language movies. I could share with you that not a week goes by where Veronica Castro's name is not on a TV program or a movie of the week or a variety show. Some people are asking me, well, who's Veronica Castro? And I was saying, if you were to say she was the Sofia Lareda of Mexico, you'd be undermining her. The reality is, she stands out. I never envisioned that I'd be taking a picture next to Veronica Castro. And I get to thank Councilmember Pacheco for this opportunity. But, yeah. And if you're all wondering why I was sweating, that has a lot to do with it. But again, we have someone before us who by far, by far, is a star in the Latin American community and has been a role model for many people and in the industry. And I just wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Nick, because I get a picture too. I'll try to keep it brief, because I'll be redundant if I don't. But obviously, for all the communities in Los Angeles, this is a much-deserved recognition for Veronica Castro, not just the Latino community, but really all of the community of Los Angeles, because we are so diverse. And it was important for Councilmember Pacheco to recognize her highlights and her accomplishments, not just as an artist, but what she's done personally. Those of us who do watch the Spanish-language movies and television and the news also know very much about her community involvement, her philanthropic involvement, and her academic achievements today were just adding on to that. I would also like, just to take a minute to make some comments in Spanish, because I know there's a lot of people who are watching that may not be as understanding or as fluent in English. And once again, this is a diverse city. En verdad, es un honor dar este reconocimiento a Veronica Castro. Y le damos las gracias a Nick Pacheco por haber nos sudar al concejal Hernandez y a mí. Pero es muy importante reconocer no solo la estrella de la Fiesta Broadway y no solo la reina de la junta del concilio ahora, pero también reconocer su éxito como artista, como madre, como estudiante. Su carrera académica es muy brillante y todo lo que ella ha hecho para nuestra comunidad siempre da su corazón, siempre da generosamente. Y por todo eso, le damos muchas gracias y este muy merecido reconocimiento. Gracias.
Bueno, me siento muy feliz, la verdad, también por muchas fotografías que he podido tomar con todos ustedes, pero sobre todo por este reconocimiento. Y a toda la gente que está aquí en Estados Unidos, en Los Ángeles. Agradecerle a toda la prensa, a todos los medios de comunicación, las televisiones, las cámaras, por supuesto. A todos ustedes amigos fotógrafos por estar este día aquí, por permitirme estar en esta fiesta, por haberme dado el apoyo, por haberme considerado en esta ocasión como una de las mujeres representativas de los latinos. Y realmente, aparte de ser muy emocionante, seguramente será una de las fiestas más bellas de todos los años. Los invito con todo cariño este domingo. Y quiero agradecer. I love the community, the American community, who loves American, Latin, Latin community. Thank you. Thank you very much for everything. Love you.
Colleagues, I also wanted to recognize and tell everyone that this Fiesta Broadway is a major event. And I want to invite you all, and also want to recognize and thank Councilmember Walters and her office for all the support that they give the event that's being held downtown in both of our districts. So thank you. Enjoy the rest of the day. We've already had our fill in terms of enjoyment, so thank you today.
You still have to stay for the council meeting, though. All right, are we ready for the next act? Almost ready for the next act. Ms. Mizakowski, you're up.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the great pleasures for me as Chair of the Council's Public Safety Committee is that I get to see an awful lot of our police officers and personnel in the Police Department across a broad range of positions, not just the local division captains with which all of us interact as council members, but also with a lot of the command staff and a lot of the people who do an awful lot of other innovative work. And standing behind me today are people who have achieved some of the highest honors within the LAPD. These are the LAPD Management Achievement Awards and Resolutions. Each year, these awards are given personally by Chief Parks to honor outstanding managers who have demonstrated excellence in all facets of management throughout the department. These include both civilian personnel who have risen in the ranks, as well as officers themselves. These were presented at the department at an annual award function last month. But I thought it was appropriate to bring them in and show and demonstrate the kind of leadership we have in LAPD today. There are two kinds of awards. One is the Department Hat, which goes to managers, which Chief Parks has selected for specific noteworthy things that they have done to assist him and help improve the operation of the department. And two, a grouping of four specific special honors that deal with particular areas of expertise that these people have demonstrated. So I wanted to bring them each down today and recognize them in council for this work that they do in helping make the department not only more efficient, but a better department for all of our citizens throughout the city. First, I'd like to present the Leadership Award, or the Council's recognition of the Leadership Award, to Captain Robert Hantin. Captain Hantin received this Leadership Award for his outstanding efforts in taking over the troubled Rampart Area Division as captain. He was transferred from the Harbor area, and he was put there based on his reputation as a strong and experienced commanding officer. And there, he's being given the salute by Councilmember Subornich, who I think will attest to his abilities. He restored and is still involved in rebuilding the morale through communication, not only with his police officers and the other employees at Rampart, but also with the community through an open-door access apology, his courage to take on this tough command, make tough decisions, and rallying the community and his officers. murder that was conducted through by rival street gangs. And the task force successfully diminished tension to the point where racial graffiti has been significantly reduced and crimes involving the two gangs has plummeted. He is also honored for implementing a juvenile impact program in the Harbor area, unique because it goes beyond what traditional at-risk youth programs do, and is working with parents, schoolteachers, police, the council office, juvenile courts, and the like. And I know that recently, council, just I think it was yesterday, excuse me, Wednesday, when we dealt with LA Bridges and had strong support from LAPD for LA Bridges, it was actually Captain Gascon who came forward to the committee earlier on and talked about the incredibly effective work, working together with LA Bridges and the community, the kids in the middle school, with parents, and putting together the kind of model program that we wanted LA Bridges to be, in fact, that it is. So I think it's an outstanding recognition given to Captain Gascon for this community police leadership, and we congratulate him. Thank you. We also have a Human Resources Award, and that is being given to Commander Eric Lillo, who is not here. And this is in recognition, he is the commanding officer of the department's Juvenile Services Group and has brought it to its highest productivity level ever, has been involved in liaison in organizing and running the relationships with the DARE program in our schools, and helping each of the geographic areas in the city work more effectively on implementing the DARE program as part of the team relationship with the Juvenile Services Group. So I wanted to mention his award as well. The next award is the Quality of Service Award, and that is being given to Captain Paul Kim. Captain Kim, I recognize, Captain Kim has been working with the West Traffic Division, in fact, just recently got transferred to that old Harbor Division. But Rudy, I can tell you about Captain Kim. Captain Kim in the West Traffic Division has done an outstanding job, again, in working with the community police advisory boards and in recognizing, what I think the department is now beginning to recognize, that as we've done a wonderful job in dealing with crime and statistics going in the right direction, going down in the commission of crimes by effective policing, that the next area that we must turn serious attention to in the Police Department is traffic, traffic congestion, traffic safety. And Captain Kim in the West Traffic Division has been a leader in that regard, working with communities, trying effective new strategies, recognizing that the police can't do it alone, that the police must do it with community, and the police must do it with effective, creative solutions with the Transportation Department. And in the West LA Division, Captain Kim helped set up the West Traffic Summit, which brought together all sorts of agencies, all sorts of community people, and it's the model that we are now implementing citywide. So he has done an incredible amount of work with the community, with his forces, with other departments, and is, I think, very much appropriate to be recognized for the quality of service. So Captain Kim, thank you very much. The next resolutions and recognitions are those called the Department Hat, and these, again, are the ones where the effective management has helped Chief Parks in helping manage and run the department. And the first one goes, the first Department Hat recognition award goes to Ken Kraus. And Ken is someone who we are also familiar with here, and very familiar, both as we are talking about the department's budget, the department's employment. He is the head of the, he's the commanding officer of the Personnel Division, and he's been honored for taking on the duties as interim commanding officer of that group, and for helping recruitment, helping increase recruitment, helping recognize that we had a problem as much as what's going on throughout the country in getting police recruits, and through his efforts and work, we are doing much, much better in that regard. And it's also dealing with other issues involving right now, just matters that deal with personnel in the Police Department. These include reducing the time required to hire civilian employees, shortening the time for background checks, and doing this all while we are still maintaining the security and accuracy of personnel records that needs to be providing and achieving the best compliance rate in the department's Human Resources Bureau. So he's got a big task, he's got an awful lot of employees that he has to help manage, and has to also manage at the same time bringing an awful lot more in. So Ken, we normally see you here in committees, dealing with these issues on an almost monthly, if not weekly, basis, and we too appreciate that and the recognition that the chief has given to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next to receive this reward is Ray Holloman. And Ray, there is Ray. Okay, thank you. Ray, we also recognize around here, he is being given this award in recognition of, as the commanding officer in charge of the Fiscal Operations Division. And we all know how important the department is, how important it is in our budget, and how important it is to keep track of it in all of its various parts, and that's what Ray's job is. He was honored for his effective oversight in one of the most overworked and understaffed support divisions for the department. He has provided leadership required, that was required, to allow the Fiscal Operations Division to keep up with unprecedented growth in LAPD's sworn ranks in recent years, and has operated one of the most efficient fiscal operations in the city despite major problems with the city's payroll system, as we knew as it affected that department. He was honored for his leadership in complying with the results of the Kimpel lawsuit in particular, over the timely payment of sworn overtime. And I know that members of the councils, we were involved in those negotiations and needing to know what we could do, what we could do, how we could do it, and how we could get a commitment to make sure a new system was managed so that we didn't get into trouble in the future. Ray played a significant role in that, and we're very pleased to share in that honor to him today. Ray, thank you. The third Department Hat Award is given to Paul Barden. Paul? Good morning. Thank you. Paul was given this award in recognition of his achievement as the commanding officer of the Motor Transport Division. He was honored for his ability to keep LAPD's fleet afloat and providing nearly the 4,000 patrol cars and other vehicles, keeping them running, keeping them in use for a good period of time, handling the shortages that were developing in the maintenance, and using all measures available for ensuring that we are getting leased vehicles on time, withholding vehicles from salvage, and juggling the vehicle inventory to make sure that LAPD's mission of fighting crime and protecting the citizens is not compromised. And he is also, in fact, I know that there has been an interesting innovative tool that is being used by some of our Motor Transport Division cars that aren't able to be used for patrol anymore, but are being able to use as decoys in some of our speed areas, where we can put a black and white there, work with citizens, maybe even get the blinker running when a citizen sees somebody going too fast. So there's innovative use for these cars even after they are no longer patrol cars, and I thank Mr. Barden for that participation as well. And finally, members of the council, the last Department Hat is given to Richard Heck. He received the Department Hat from Chief Parks in recognition of his achievements as the Assistant Commanding Officer of the Emergency Command and Control and Communication System. He was honored for his excellent management of the investment disposition and accounting of all of Proposition M expenditures, and for the savings of more than $200,000 in discounts for immediate turnaround of payments. We know that that is something the city had not been taking advantage of, and in the X system under that Proposition M, it's being managed very well in Mr. Heck's capable hands. He was also honored for his skillful management of consultant contracts and the project management for the construction of the department's two new dispatch centers. So he's had his hands full in helping to bring the department into the 21st century and make our command and communication, which is so critical all the time, but particularly in time of high emergency need. And so we thank him for helping bringing that project online. Thank you very, very much. Madam President, I think you want to join with me and the whole council in recognizing these outstanding leaders that Chief Parks has recognized for their ongoing day-to-day leadership and workmanship that helps us help effectively manage and help the chief effectively manage the Los Angeles Police Department.
I think we do want to do that, but several council members want to do it personally and individually. So Mr. Savornich is first. Mr. Savornich. Hey Rudy, you're on.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Misakowski for bringing in our fine gentleman here. And I just wanted to stand for a moment and with great pride be able to acknowledge three gentlemen who were involved with Harbor Division, Captain Hanson, Captain Gascon, and now Captain Kim, I should say Commander Gascon now. And I think that I and my constituents have been very, very fortunate to have three fine gentlemen being commanding officers at Harbor Division, and to the other gentlemen standing with them, I would also like to add my congratulations, because we in the Harbor Division have been very fortunate to have the quality and the caliber of command officers that we see being honored here today, and it is really, really indeed a pleasure to see them so honored. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Mr. Holden.
I'd like to join with Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Savornich, and members of the council and the entire community, to commend these fine officers for a job well done. They recognize the fact that you're the cream of the crop, and that you've dedicated your whole life to protecting and serving the people of this city. Without a doubt, I'm sure each and every one of you could very well be a police chief anywhere else, including the city of Los Angeles in the United States of America, and that has happened upon many occasions, where captains and sometimes even lieutenants, certainly commanders and deputy chiefs have gone on to become police chiefs, well-trained, well-qualified, and carry on their great duties wherever they subsequently serve. I'd just like to make mention of each and every one of you, but one of you in particular, chief, I'm sorry, captain, Paul Kim. Paul Kim represented my area in the Pacific Coast Division, West Traffic Division, and he was there even as a lieutenant. And I must tell you that he's a guy who never gave up. He's well-trained, born in Korea, the highest-ranking Korean officer in the LAPD department. He went on to get his PhD, you can call him Dr. Kim, in nearly 30 years of service. But you know, as they say sometime from time to time, it's even a struggle to even get to be captain, and to be recognized for your talent, your skills, your ability, and your commitment. But you have today been so recognized, and you'll be classed the same as all others, and be given the same opportunities as all others to ascend to even a high height. Congratulations, God bless, and each and every one of you.
Thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam President.
And we're now going to call on Ms. Goldberg.
You say Goldberg?
Oh, thank you very much. First, I have several. I'd like to ask the folks who are here on Spank Out Day to come up first, please. Chair, Plante, members of the council. As you know, millions of children every year suffer child abuse. And some of it, in fact, most of it, is in the name of discipline. We know that children need guidance and deserve to grow up in an environment free from physical harm. Corporal punishment has been banned finally from the schools because it provides a poor model for solving interpersonal as well as societal problems. And unfortunately, since the media is the message, it leads to a pro-violence attitude and contributes to the cycle of abuse. Violence to children is a preventable harm, and preventing physical violence to children includes learning and using nonviolent discipline methods. There is now, on April 30th, a National Spank Out Day in our community. It is sponsored by the Center for Nonviolent Education and Parenting, and it is involved with advocating child-rearing practices that develop caring, responsible, and self-disciplined adults. By resolution, you all join me today in recognizing this event and congratulating those who are involved in National Spank Out Day in our community for their advocacy on behalf of children. This is a controversial issue to many, but as time has gone by, people have learned increasingly that there are certainly behaviors of children which need to be rewarded and those which need to be prevented and stopped, but that spanking is not a way to do either, that what we can do is provide methodologies and help to parents who want to make sure that their children have excellent behavior in their home and in the community, but that there are nonviolent child-rearing practices that do this far better than spanking can. So I'd like to ask, I don't know who it is, Ruth Beagle Hole and whoever else is here to come up and to present to you on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, this resolution of congratulations. And I want to take a personal note to say that I wish you and those of you who work with, not only good luck in this particular day, but I hope that it becomes a larger and larger annual national event every year, as we try to get a message across to parents that loving their children and disciplining their children is important, but that it doesn't have to include physical violence. Congratulations on all your leadership.
Thank you very much to the City Council for giving us this resolution. I'm joined today by teen parents from the Los Angeles Technology Center Teen Program, women who have all learned to raise their children by breaking the cycle of violence and without spanking, but with giving good, positive discipline to children. I think it's very fitting we're here today because this is the month of the young child, and it is also a time when we're very concerned about violence in families and in the home. And we know that the climate of violence starts with the slap on the hand, the slap on the bottom, that actually teaches children that anger can be resolved by hitting. I know it's a controversial issue, but more and more people are embracing this issue and saying, "Let's be like the 10 countries in the world that have actually outlawed spanking." The Scandinavian countries have given the lead, and we're beginning here by celebrating National Spank Out Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, if you'd like to leave, I have a couple more presentations. The next, as you know, each Friday, we are honoring two more of the Productivity Improvement Award winners, and I'd like to ask those folks to come up today from the Bureau of Sanitation and the Department of General Services Fleet Services Division. Would all of you come forward, please? We also have a visitor here today from Bangkok, Thailand, Ms. Sutinam Pengsop, and she is entering her second year in graduate studies at Brigham Young University and has
and without spanking, but with giving good, positive discipline to children. I think it's very fitting we're here today because this is the month of the young child. And it is also a time when we're very concerned about violence in families and in the home. And we know that the climate of violence starts with the slap on the hand, the slap on the bottom, that actually teaches children that anger can be resolved by hitting. I know it's a controversial issue, but more and more people are embracing this issue and saying, let's be like the 10 countries in the world that have actually outlawed spanking. The Scandinavian countries have given the lead, and we're beginning here by celebrating National Spank Out Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, if you'd like to leave, I have a couple more presentations. The next, as you know, each Friday, we are honoring two more of the Productivity Improvement Award winners. And I'd like to ask those folks to come up today from the Bureau of Sanitation and the Department of General Services Fleet Services Division. Would all of you come forward, please? We also have a visitor here today from Bangkok, Thailand, Ms. Sutinon Pengsop. And she is entering her second year in graduate studies at Brigham Young University and has partnered with the Governor of Bangkok, BYU, and the Commission to strive to improve the efficiency of service delivery in Bangkok. This three-day assignment with the Commission is in support of World Bank and IMF loan requirements and educating Bangkok on methods for enacting improved efficiencies in customer service, leading to more cost-effective delivery of service. Then we had also a delegation prior to this. Ms. Sutinon, close enough, thank you, will return to Thailand this weekend to work with the Governor of Bangkok, implementing concepts learned here in Los Angeles. On behalf of my colleagues, we want to welcome you here and hope that you've enjoyed your stay and will cross-fertilize some interesting ideas across nations. Now I'd like to say to you that the first presentation we have is the Sewer Closed Circuit Television Inspection, Bureau of Sanitation effort. As you may know, Los Angeles has 6,500 miles of sewers and contracted closed-circuit television inspection of these sewers costing the city over $1 million annually. The team that you'll see in person and on tape discussed, redesigned all phases of the process, brought these services in-house, and reduced the cost by 20% to 35% over the contract rate. So the annual savings is something in the neighborhood of $265,000. And if we can see the tape, you'll get to see even more about it.
The city of Los Angeles has over 6,500 miles of sewers, serving approximately 4 million people across a 600-square-mile area. These sewer lines vary in diameter from 6 inches to over 12 feet, moving 500 million gallons of wastewater daily to the city's treatment plants. These sewer lines must be kept free of grease, debris, and roots, and fractured lines require repair or replacement. To assess the condition of our sewers, the city employed contractors with closed-circuit television technology, or CCTV, to examine and photograph the inside of these lines. However, at $1.10 per foot of sewer examined, this is an expensive operation costing the city over $1 million annually. In response, the Bureau of Sanitation Wastewater Collection Systems Division convened a joint labor management team to explore cost-reduction options and initiated a pilot program to perform sewer examination in-house. The team reviewed and acquired the necessary CCTV equipment and reviewed strategies for dispatching, route planning, and the efficient utilization of resources. Technicians in the field offer invaluable recommendations for continuous improvements, and the examination processes are regularly modified to enhance efficiency. The result has been a cost savings of 20% to 35% below that of previously contracted services. A motivated and engaged team and projected annual savings to the city of $265,000. Congratulations to the Bureau of Sanitation and Local Unions 347 and 501 on this outstanding program.
Okay, I'd like to ask Judith Wilson, the general manager, to come up and introduce the teams.
Thank you. As was noted, this was a labor management project. Just for your information, we began work on Wednesday on the 2001-2002 budget with a retreat of our labor management folks, all working on budget study areas. So hopefully, that's the incubator for future productivity improvement awards. Today with me is Jim Langley, my Assistant Director for Operations in Wastewater, and Barry Bergren, who is the Division Head for Collections. And Barry's going to introduce the team.
Thank you, and I'd like to just say that this team has truly done a remarkable job, and through their efforts, they really prove that city forces can compete with both public and private entities performing the same work. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the team. I have Mr. Randy Riley, Christine Villarante, Darren McGuire, Sergio Perez, Carl Scott, and Melissa Gomez. There are several other members who could not be here today. This team actually performs these activities Monday through Friday, three shifts a day, and there's even a graveyard shift, so some of the people can be with us today. Thank you very much.
The second group we're going to do has my favorite name of their project. It's called Broom Hilda. And it's the Department of General Services Fleet Services Division. You know, we have about 150 street sweepers machines in Los Angeles, and these machines use rotating brooms to keep the streets clean. Well, we rebuild our own brooms, and this team has developed and built a device to improve the efficiency and safety, which is a key issue in this particular process, of this process, and saving about $4,600 annually. But it does more than that, as you will see in this particular video.
Everyone recognizes them, and the city of Los Angeles has about 150 of these vehicles to help keep our streets clean. These sweepers use brooms to remove the debris that might wash into the storm drains and pollute the ocean. These brooms are made of plastic fibers and require replacement at regular intervals. To remove the used broom fibers, the broom is placed on a stationary fixture, and a forklift pulls the cable that holds the plastic fibers on the reusable hub. Fibers fly all over the place, creating quite a mess for employees to clean up. This operation requires considerable time and exposes employees to an unnecessary risk of injury. With the assistance of GSD welders, the team developed a solution they affectionately call Broom Hilda. Broom Hilda sits on the back of a refuse truck and positions the used broom directly above the hopper area of the refuse vehicle. As the cable is pulled, the plastic fibers are released as before, but are contained within the refuse vehicle, reducing the risk of injury and minimizing cleanup. The reusable hub is now ready to be refitted with new bristles, which is performed on-site by Fleet Services personnel. Broom Hilda reduces the risk of injury and saves the city $4,600 each year, proving once again that necessity is the mother of invention. Congratulations.
We have with us this morning Assistant General Manager of General Services, Tony De Clu, who will present the team.
That's very clever. I like that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Goldberg, members of City Council. It gives me great pleasure to be a part of General Services and to be associated with the Fleet Services organization. They never cease to amaze me at the innovations they come up with, and certainly, those innovations couldn't be possible without the kind of supervision, the kind of leadership that that division receives from Mr. Blaine. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Blaine now.
Thank you very much. There's an old saying that a new broom sweeps clean. Well, every year, every day, these gentlemen back here are coming up with new ideas to help make the broom sweep cleaner, and I'd like to introduce them. Tommy Walker, Tim Hall, Bob Rodriguez, Gerald St. Ange, and Robert Rodriguez, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to, in the interest of making sure we get to, you have more? We have to do some business because I got a bunch of people threatening to leave.
I see. We have the film advisory board, are they here?
Jackie, what I'd like to do is try to do the agenda, and then we'll come back and finish the presentations.
All righty. Come on back.
Okay. Madam Clerk, let's do the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, those are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, those are approved. Mr. Padilla, I haven't forgotten you. I just want to make sure we get the agenda done here. Go ahead.
Before beginning the regular agenda, item number eight, Councilmember Goldberg requests that be continued to May 12th.
Two, you want to do it now, or you want to?
I think we have a motion to act on.
Okay. Then we will not continue item eight.
Let me see if it's been written out.
All right, you go find that out while we go ahead. What else have we got?
And the closed session, items 10 and 11, both request to be continued to Tuesday, May 2nd.
All right, those will be continued to May 2nd.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 9, items for which public hearings have been held, or you have ordinances on 1, 2, and item number 3 has two ordinances, so you may wish to call that special.
It also has cards.
All right, so let's call item 3 special and item 8 special for an amendment. You can do items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9.
Any council members wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on item 1, please. And that brings us to, I believe, item 3. All right, we have, now, we have had a public hearing on item 3. Have we not? We have not? Yes? No, we had a public. We have two people who've asked to present general comments, and one has not indicated. If I, we've heard it, if I do not hear a motion for a public hearing, we will put your cards in the file and we will have a vote. But we also have a couple of speakers on the council who want to be heard. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. If Mr. Savornich is among those speakers, I defer to him as the chair of the committee, and then we can sort of switch times. So if you want to lead off, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Fuhr, for the courtesy. What we have before us, colleagues, is an increase in rates for taxi cab service in the city of Los Angeles. As you know, just in recent weeks, we sent out, this council approved, the issuance of RFPs for new taxi franchises in the city of Los Angeles, which is going to be taken care of in the latter part of this year. But this is an issue that we have not addressed in this city for almost 14 years. For 14 years, those who actually drive the taxi cabs have not seen an increase in being able to raise fares to transport both residents and visitors to the city of Los Angeles. This is an item that is long overdue, and what has prompted us to take a look at this item at this point in time, as you are very well aware, is the rapid increase in gasoline costs, not only in the greater Los Angeles region, but in Southern California and in most of the country. And one of the things that is grossly eating into the profits of taxi drivers in this city is having to pay for gasoline that is now upwards of $1.75 to $2.00 a gallon. One of the things that we have to be conscious of is that even without the increase in gasoline, to be able to hold prices and the fare box rates for 14 years, even though inflation has been low, even though the cost of living in some other industries has been low, in regards to the transportation industry, costs have continued to climb, and I am so very surprised that we did not address this at an earlier time. We do have two ordinances before you, and upon advice of the city attorney, it has to be the council's call whether or not we want to go forward with either the urgency ordinance, which I think is appropriate, because the longer we put this off, the more these taxi drivers are being socked in the wallet in regards to these gas prices. And also, we have two amending motions, one by myself and one by Mr. Burnson, which would make revenue-neutral the impact on seniors who participate in the City Ride Transit Program. And so there's a motion 3A and a 3B, one authored by Mr. Burnson, one authored by myself, that would address the concerns that anything that we do to increase the rates of taxi operations in the city of Los Angeles does not in any way negatively impact seniors, and Mr. Hernandez had also mentioned this in committee. So colleagues, today, we need to take a step forward. We need to pass these ordinances. It is just the right thing to do. It's been 14 years in coming, and I would like to thank my colleagues, Mr. Burnson and Mr. Hernandez on the Transportation Committee for working through this issue and in doing the right thing for the drivers of taxi cabs in this city. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Fuhr.
Okay, Mr. Fuhr, now it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I rose because in each of our prior debates about this, having not had the benefit of serving on the committee, I wanted to focus, if you recall, on the issue of senior citizen services. And so I really appreciate the spirit of the two amending motions that are before us, both the revenue neutrality piece and the 8 to 12 issue. Is there someone here from staff on this? Because my major concerns, colleagues, boil down, not so much to the revenue neutrality motion, but to whether the movement from 8 to 12, when it comes to scrip, is sufficient to incentivize cab drivers to do what they have not been doing as much of as we want, and that is to pick up seniors who rely on this. Because if I recall correctly, you all were going to move from 8 to 12 in any event. That was part of the package, was it not?
That is correct, sir.
All right, so this motion's a good motion, but it memorializes what was already on the table. Bottom line, is it enough to get, is 12 enough? We can't have seniors fail to be served by cab drivers deeming the scrip program insufficient to make it worth their while economically. And I'm concerned that 12 is an insufficient number to which to go to accommodate that goal.
We think it is. The second part of our program, and we hope to bring that to you very shortly, is to give additional scripts to the drivers to compensate for their handling, which is a cost that their companies detract or reduce from their revenue. So in order to offset that, we have a set of recommendations that's coming to your committee very shortly.
So let me be clear, because I, Mr. Burnson was appropriately directing my attention to language in 3B, but the spirit of 3B is to make the increases that are on the table today revenue-neutral from the standpoint of seniors.
That is correct.
And my point, while that's a very important goal, my point has been different from that. My point is not that merely we have to keep it revenue-neutral if the rates go up. My point is that keeping things as they are, the status quo, isn't good enough because currently, the rates, the scrip provision, is insufficiently low, and the cab drivers are not sufficiently incentivized to pick up senior citizens. So merely holding us in place, while it's better than the alternative, is not nearly good enough. So I guess my question goes to this. I certainly, I support the direction of each of 3A and 3B, but what I guess I'd like to do, and Mr. Burnson, Mr. Savornich, my question goes to each of you as the makers of these respective motions, I'd like to have these motions pass, but the language that refers to "as needed" in Mr. Burnson's motion is, as needed to achieve revenue neutrality with a status quo. What I'd like is to do is to amend that, to get a report, well, revenue neutrality means no worse than the situation is now as the rates go up, does it not? Okay.
All right, Michael, press the button again.
Let me just finish my sentence. I guess the point I want to achieve, and it's probably how the same thing we're all trying to achieve, is to get a report within the next 30 days on what it takes to actually sufficiently incentivize cab drivers to pick up senior citizens relying on the scrip program, not merely for purposes of revenue neutrality.
That was a very long sentence. Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, as long as we do this today and make the others separate, and then, because we all want to do what is necessary to make the accommodation complete. So I would urge an "aye" vote on this. I think Mr. Savornich properly addressed the subject. I don't need to repeat that, but I would ask that we move forward today, and I think that Mr. Fuhr's separate motion is very proper, and I'm supporting that also. So I'd ask for an "aye" vote on this.
Mrs. Chik.
My questions are good.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, these rates, which they are said to be needed, far exceed what the taxi cabs charge in Washington, DC, for an example. They pay the same for gas as they pay out here, and yet, the issue before us, in some cases, looked like it would triple, quadruple the amount that we paid for taxi cab services in Washington, DC. $1.90 for the first one ninth of a mile. You can travel all throughout the entire zone over there. You can travel all throughout the entire zone over there, and you end up paying maybe $2.50, $3.00. Nobody seemed to complain about it. I do have some problem with what they're asking for and how they plan to try to justify it. A five-mile paid trip is $9.58. Trips would, this trip would cost, could cost, $10.70. But what if it's, if they tell you, just do a five-mile trip, and you're only going three miles, or two miles, or going to zone, whereas we've established zones in downtown Los Angeles, from inner city to the train station, Central Station, and then they raised the rates on that already? That's one problem. The other is that, as been mentioned by Mr. Fuhr, they just do not intend to provide the services where it's needed necessarily, but where it makes the most money for them. And that's the senior citizens. Those coupons, taxi coupons, they don't even recognize them. Imagine a senior citizen having to go to get a dialysis, to go get some medical care, and they're waiting for the taxi, they have a specific appointment, you know what happens? They don't show up. And the department is aware of it. They receive these complaints over and over again, and the question is, what have they done about it? Maybe they thought about it, but they've made no effective changes to require the taxi cab companies to comply. So it seemed to me at least that this is an area that the Ethics Commission should look at strong and hard, from top to bottom, as relates to this industry and how they do business in the city of Los Angeles, and that department as relates to this particular industry. I'll be putting a motion in for that. I think it's wrong to say this should be an urgency clause. People who are paying, planning to pay one set fee for a taxi, and then next week, when it's posted, they're going to end up paying another. Let the 30-day run, give them proper notice to the television, to proper Channel 35, to the newspapers, that the taxi rates are going to go up, and watch them squeal. I don't think you should impose it on them instantaneously, and that's what an urgency clause does, and the public should know what that vote represents, and when I withhold, they'll know why I'm doing that, and it's to protect them.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I also urge an aye vote on the amendments, and I was listening carefully to what Councilmember Fuhr was saying, and I think it's important that we recognize, and most of the taxi cab operators are present, that we're going through a new RFP that basically is going to create franchise and is going to be studying service. It's extremely important that we also include in those studies the service to our seniors. As someone who fought for citywide script, because we had a situation where script was only being provided in certain areas, we need to understand that the seniors need to be able to use taxi cabs, it's tremendous, and I can tell you stories of my mom not being able to depend on taxi cabs when she had to go to the doctors, and that's not what I think any of us want to see. So I think it's important that we work with the industry, and that the industry work with the city in trying to deal with that issue. And it, for some reason, I think that we as a city want to make sure the incentive is proper and that it's there, and I think that taxi cab service providers need to make sure that their industry is servicing the total public. And so I welcome a study to that degree, but for today, I ask us to pass it, what's before us, as part of the overall development of our taxi cab franchise system, our overall development of the service we're providing to our constituencies, and then at the same time, implement the equipment that's necessary to be able to study that service, and to continue to work with the industry in trying to make sure the proper incentives are present so that we're not lacking in service to any particular segment of the population. I think that's part of what this whole movement's been about, and I just ask us to keep moving in that direction.
Go ahead.
I just, there seems to be some miscommunication, a misunderstanding. I want to point out, in the City Ride Program, seniors are, there's so many people that use it. We have about 90,000 people that are seniors and people with disability that are registered in the City Ride Program. And on a daily basis, 5,000 seniors are carried. That's more people carried than people that use the taxi at the airport. And you know, more people use taxi at the airport in Los Angeles than any other place in the United States today. So your seniors are taking taxis. Yes, we do get complaints, and we'll get back to you on a report in 30 days, but significantly, they're treated very well. We spent about $5 million carrying our seniors on our taxis on a daily basis, I mean, on a yearly basis. So I just wanted to have that information for your consideration. They're a very important part of our program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goldberg.
When was the last time fares were raised?
1986.
And by what percent were they raised in 1986?
I do not remember.
Because this says it's an 11.7% raise.
It's 11.7% for a five-mile rate raise, and when you go to about 10, 11, 12 miles, it gets closer to about 12.2%.
Yeah.
But roughly 11.
That's a pretty hefty raise in fees.
That's about 1% a year raise since 1986.
Well, no, it hasn't been 11 years since 1986, so it couldn't be 1% a year.
It's been 14 years.
Eighty-six, I'm sorry, I'm counting 96. I heard.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Eighty-six, you're right.
Okay.
I stand corrected. Okay, my concern really is, at any price, there are still parts of the city that taxi drivers do not go to and pick up, and I want to know, if we're giving them more money, does this mean we're going to get better compliance on the issue of picking up in all parts of the city when they're called?
There are no.
In the same day that they are called?
There are no changes being made in our program, other than what we do have already in place, but as, I wrote you a four-page letter, as you know, just last week, early this week, explaining all the issues you had, and what we are planning to do, as you know, in the RFP, being able to put tracking systems so that we know who's serving where, and we're measuring response time of every single call from every single company, Councilwoman Goldberg, and therefore, we'll be able to monitor the kind of calls that you're talking about, and find out which company is not responding in a timely manner.
All right.
Right now, we only have a limited amount of test calls, so we're not calling.
Okay, wait, James, you're using up her time. Let her finish.
Okay. Well, I, you know, everybody needs to make a living, and if there hasn't been an increase in 14 years, that's obviously time, so I will support all of this. But I will tell you that the areas I represent are very much unhappy with taxi service, and these are not necessarily people who can't afford to take the short rides that they take, they just can't get anybody to come pick them up. They say they want to go to dinner, and they call at 5:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, say they want someone to come two hours later, and seven hours or five hours later, someone actually calls and says, well, do you still need a taxi? Well, they're no longer going to dinner at that point. And these are folks who are able to afford it, as well as people who, for whom that taxi ride was the biggest luxury of the month, and they still can't get a cab. So if we don't change this, you know, I'm going to get very much more aggressive on this issue, because I'm getting very much more aggressive phone calls from my constituents, and that works with this council member, to tell you that it's not working in a lot of places in this city, and I can't believe that my district is the only one experiencing this problem.
Mr. Savornich, to close, I hope.
Thank you, Madam President, indeed, to close. Just a couple of things to reassure some of my colleagues in regards to some of the issues that they have raised. This is an 11% increase, and again, we have not addressed an increase for taxi cab rates since 1986. Concurrently, the cost to operate a taxi cab since 1986 has gone up 28%. And so we are still, if, to catch up to what cost to operate a taxi cab in 14 years, we have made only an 11% dent into the 28% increase. So there is still 17% in lost revenue over a 14-year period in regards to these operators doing business. And that's the problem with not addressing these issues every year. And one of the things that we are taking a look at, Mr. Okazaki will attest to, is that we tie the rates to a CPI Consumer Price Index/Transportation Price Index to make sure that we don't sock it to the customer all at once, and we don't sock it to the operator all at once, or over a period of time, that we're able to keep up every year or every other year with changes to the market economy which will reflect a continual quality or improvement in service. One of the ways not to improve service is to make sure that people's rates stay down and they can't afford to keep up with cost of doing business. And so if you keep someone's operational costs down, and in regards to, or keep someone's profit margin down, when it's been eaten up all these years, you don't get better service, you get worse service. And so we have a long way to go, and in regards to the senior issues, colleagues, we have also asked in the committee report that this come back, and we are able to keep a careful monitoring of it, to make sure that the issues regarding the senior program as part of the increase is taken care of. With that, I move approval, and let's get on with it.
That's, Mr. Holden wants to be heard. That was supposed to be the close, Mr. Holden.
No, but the.
It was.
No, no, nobody asked.
I announced it, and nobody else had pressed the button.
Nobody.
Now we've got Burnson pressing the button also.
No, you can't, because you spoke, you pushed after I did, and the.
He did push after you did, but I wish you had at least given Mr. Savornich the courtesy of being able to close.
Well, you're the chair, now you have to just call on me.
Hey, Nate, I called on you as soon as your button was pushed.
Okay, thank you.
Just because you thought about it ahead of time doesn't mean I knew it.
Let me speak, thank you.
Go right ahead, take some more time.
My question is to the staff.
I know that.
Is about the calibration of the meters. That's number one. Number two, there's nothing in here to discuss the calibration of meters, and what's the periodic time slot for that? Don't take my time, answer at the very end. Number two, is that you say you never had a raise, increase, the one-ninth of a mile. At best my recollection, that was a longer distance initially at some point, and those distances have been contracted, which in essence does provide for an increase. Is that not correct, Mr. James?
The adjustments you make on the meter is consistent with the 11.7% increase, so before it was one-eighth of a mile, now it's one-ninth of a mile.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is how you adjust it.
Yeah, no, but, but, not only, no, you adjusted in the price for one-ninth, you increased in the price for one-ninth, where it used to be one-eighth, you've also made that change.
No, that, that.
And the time, and the times, the number of seconds.
That is correct.
So you have not given all the information which suggests that there has not been an increase. There's been an increase because if you increase, decrease the time for waiting, then that becomes, then you add an additional fee for that, and you decrease the distance for which you can add a fee, that when it affects, becomes an increase. So tell me, my dear friend, that they have not had an increase 11 years, and I'll tell you something's wrong with that statement. Ha, ha, ha.
Mr. Burnson.
I moved the previous question on the time matter.
Is there any objection to the previous question? Give Mr. Burnson a medal. All right, we have two amendments before us. We have an amendment by Mr. Savornich. Let's open the roll on that. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That passed unanimously. Now we have an amendment by Mr. Burnson. Open the roll on that. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That also passed unanimously. Now we have the ordinance as amended before us.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As a point of order, my motion, which I guess the makers of the motion is sought to be treated separately.
Your motion was going to be a separate.
Subsequent to the ordinance will do the motion, I find.
Yes, okay. So we now have the ordinance as amended before us. Open the, is that it? Open the roll on the ordinance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
All right, that goes over one week. Next item.
Madam Chair, my motion?
Your motion.
Which was, to be requested.
Are you going to bring it in?
No, just orally.
Just orally.
Let's just do it today, which was, and I think Mr. Burnson seconded the motion.
Right, all right, let's do that, right, okay. You got, have you got that?
All right, Mr. Fuhr's motion was for a report in 30 days on what it'll take to get the seniors, what they need.
On the senior support of the script.
Right. Open the roll on Mr. Fuhr's motion, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, members of the council. Next item is, I believe, yes, it was item, ordinance B.
Did, thank you, Madam President, for the courtesy. Perhaps this should be directed to the clerk also. Did we pass the urgency ordinance or the other ordinance?
The urgency, the urgency, but we didn't pass it because Mr. Holden withheld.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kowski, we're on item eight now, I believe.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a matter in, a public works matter in Council District 11. Members of the council, it's a bit of one of these very strange stories, where this is a piece of property that is being recommended in the committee report to accept an offer to dedicate a public street easement on the south side of Kittredge, between Sepulveda and a little bit easterly thereof. The odd part about this request for an easement, it looks pretty straightforward, is that about 30 years ago, we built the street on this location and on this easement. About 16, 17 years ago, the owner of the property, in acquiring the property, learned that back taxes were due for this particular property, and she paid the back taxes on this piece of property, and has been paying the property taxes ever since, and only recently learned that this property on which she paid back taxes since 1983, on which she's been diligently paying taxes since, it's a 30-foot strip by about 300 feet long, is in fact not her property, and is in fact, and has been, a city street. So she filed a claim to be made whole and to equitably deal with the situation where the city had built the street, never had accepted an easement, reconcile in giving us the easement, but getting some recognition for the back payment. The city attorney has advised that this claim was filed, but the claim was filed relatively recently, and so although this has been going on for 17 years or longer, that we should only make a nominal payment of $100 to rectify this. I think the city attorney is probably legally right, but members of the council, this is not a legal question. This is a question of what is fair, what is equitable, what makes sense, what acknowledges a mistake the city made 30 years ago when we paid the street and didn't have the easement. So I have brought in amending motion 8A and discussed this, it's seconded by Councilwoman Padilla and Councilmember Goldberg, and it basically reconciles, I think, a making whole and a compensation for this back payment of taxes that we accepted, the county assessor accepted since 1983 forward, and does amend recommendation number four in the committee report, where the committee had recommended just the nominal compensation as recommended by the city attorney of $100. Instead, it recommends that we compensate and move an appropriation of $10,496 to be authorized from the general fund to compensate the property owner, the petition owner, in recognition of both the back taxes paid and in accepting now the dedication of this parcel as is described and on which a city street has existed. So I move 8A.
All right, anybody else wish to be heard? We do have a card on item eight, but she's in favor of the proposal, so I think if Ms. Stockwell doesn't mind, I'm going to make you a part of the record, and we're not going to hold a separate public hearing, and we're going to open the roll on item 8A. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is unanimously approved. I think we would like that one forthwith. And now we'll do eight as amended, I'm sorry, we have to do eight as amended, and then we'll do it forthwith. Open the roll on eight as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is now unanimously approved, and we'll do that forthwith. I believe that completes the agenda except for public comment. Is there anybody in the, I don't have any cards on public comment. I know, and Mr. Padilla has one who got here before you did, so Mr. Padilla is up first, if he's ready. Mr. Padilla, do you want to do your presentation? I'm batting a thousand this morning, everybody I call on is busy when I call on them.
It's one of those kinds of mornings.
It certainly is. But it's still morning, so we're obviously making progress here. Did I officially close the public comment period? If I didn't, let me do that. All right, go ahead, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you for your patience. I want to call several members of our Recreation and Parks Department staff to join me for this presentation. In, just following suit to the new tradition that Councilmember Goldberg implemented a couple of weeks ago, in taking opportunities to highlight what's good about the city of Los Angeles, and what we're excited about, and what's absolutely working in terms of our city government, I wanted to share a personal experience. A couple Saturdays ago, I was out in Pacoima, in the Hanson Dam area, where Wrecking Parks now once again maintains a few baseball fields. And the reasons, the reason I was out. And the reasons, the reason I was out there was because it was opening day for a little league called the Pacoima Youth Athletic Foundation, and so they asked me to go out there and throw the first pitch. But two stories. One is, a couple months ago, the president of the league came to my office because they had a lease with the city of Los Angeles to maintain the league and to maintain the fields. And they were, for years and years, falling on tough times. And I remember last year, and the year before, and a couple years before, they were barely scraping together the resources to put the league on for the year. They're barely scraping together the resources and the man-hours to maintain the fields, and were barely minimal conditions to play in. And I also thought back to about 15 years ago, when I was a kid, you heard me tell one of the stories a couple days ago, when I was growing up playing Little League. And what I told the folks behind me that day was that when I was a kid, I used to play on these fields. And yes, these fields have been in poor condition for a long, long time. So a couple months ago, when the president came to my office, and he said, "We have the league opening day coming up soon, we need your help." We turned to Wreckin' Parks. And recently, we just approved a contract with Little League of America to develop a baseball complex there, starting next year, but we didn't want this year to go by without there being Little League for the Pacoima Youth Athletic Foundation. So the fields were in pretty dire condition, and we called upon the department, and they rose to the task. And so I want to name off the folks who are standing behind me first. Pete Topete, Peter Turner, William Spahn, Don Gonzer, George Topete, Jesse Rodriguez, Martin Ibarra, Esteban Lopez, Edgar Becerra, Rodolfo Becerra, Ramon Barajas, Laura Baranfeind, Richard Hutchinson, Larry Beck, Eduardo Zapata, Ron Berkowitz, Jose Valdez, Oscar Pongo, Juan Gonzalez, Ray Santamuro, and Eduardo Ramos. And if you look at their task or their work order, their assignments, what it'll say is that in the last month, they laid new sod, they put in new pipes, they made sure the grass was watered, they maintained the grass, and they removed gopher holes, the gopher holes where I sprained my ankles. But I'll tell you, what these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen did was much more than that. They brought to the Hanson Dam area and to Pacoima a top-quality field. I was jealous when I was out there that morning, that I didn't get a chance to play on fields like that. And I've been to the field at Dodger Stadium, I've been on the field at Dodger Stadium, and I am not exaggerating when I say I believe the Dodgers would trade their infield for the infield that these gentlemen put together. And so I wanted to bring them in front of the council today, in front of everybody that's watching from home tonight, in following suit to the tradition we've established about honoring the positive and the great things that city employees do. And from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of all the kids who are playing out there every single day, thank them for their work under the gun in restoring these fields. And at this point in time, I'd ask for you to join me in a round of applause as I call Kevin Regan to say a few words.
We have, Mr. Padilla, before Mr. Regan, whom I can't see behind this pole, talks, we have two more council members who want to speak. Mr. Burnson was, is he still here?
No.
No, okay, Mrs. Chick.
Councilmember Padilla, first of all, thank you for bringing this wonderful project and the wonderful people who made it happen to us, but you left out one thing. What happened with your pitch?
I actually threw out two opening pitches, one for different divisions.
And? It was okay? Was over the home plate?
Yeah, well, you know, we should have brought the catcher.
Okay.
But I think his hand is still healing.
Anyway, congratulations. Okay, now it's your turn.
Councilmember Padilla and members of the council, I would really like to thank you for this presentation and honoring these city employees. This truly became a labor of love, working on this field. You know, when the crews first got there, they noticed that these fields were in poor condition, and the groups that had been maintaining them hadn't had the funding and the resources available to maintain them properly. And as the crew started working, the leadership in individual gardeners and senior gardeners and park maintenance supervisors came out, and I truly believe that they joined together and did even more than they were asked to do. They were initially just asked to do to fix the irrigation and get some grass. And truly, they planted trees, they fixed safety hazards, they fixed fencing, they put in a grass infield, and truly, the day of, opening day, it could have been Dodger Stadium out in Pacoima, and every one of these employees was proud of their efforts. And I would just like to say, on behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks, thank you for providing a quality service to the community.
And I would like to add to that, thank you to all of you for your hard work, and also thank you for your patience in letting us get through the agenda before this. It doesn't always work that way, but I really appreciate it.
Want to make just two last comments. A member of my staff, James Wilson, who was integral in working not only with the department and the staff, but with the, with the Pacoima Youth Athletic Foundation making this happen, and Ramon Barajas, who shared the story that he's a resident of Los Angeles, has a kid in Little League, not in the 7th Council District, but in another council district. Now, I'm not going to say it, because then the council member will know, but his son wants to know why they can't have it in this, in their park, and I'm sure we're going to be working in that direction as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all of you. Ms. Goldberg, you had an additional presentation?
Folks here from the Film Advisory Board? I don't know that they arrived, or may have arrived and gone, I know. Anyone here from the Film Advisory Board? No. And I don't.
I guess you don't. All right.
I guess they...
All right. Adam Clark, do we have anything else on the agenda? She, I think she did that. Okay. I think that's it.
We have motions for posting and referral.
Those are approved.
You have an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused. May 19th, 23rd, 24th, 26th, and 30th, personal business.
Now, the first ones are city business, the last day is personal business.
I need a motion on the 19th.
Oh, all right. Well, Ms. Goldberg moves, Mr. Hernandez second.
That clears the desk.
All right. Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing none? We do, yes, we do.
May I present my adjourning motion, Madam President?
Oh, you'll have to wait your turn, Mr. Hernandez is first.
Oh, that'd be fine, as long as you recognize me when the time comes.
Madam Chair, members of the council, this adjourning motion might have already been made, but when we checked in the clerk's office, we were told it had not. And I'd like us to adjourn today in the name of Mr. Dan Virtus. Dan Virtus basically was a good friend of mine. I got to know him when he was working for the Assemblyman Art Torres, as well as worked for Senator Art Torres, as well as helped Senator Hilda Solis get elected to office. So I knew him as a political administrator and someone who worked with people. Then I basically, I always knew Dan as someone with a smile, and basically went up to you and said, "How can I help you?" He left those political jobs to work for United Way of Los Angeles. Then he spent some time working for CHERLA, the Coalition on Human, Humane Immigrant Rights in L.A. He was a political consultant for Joe Soreland Associates. He worked in Chicago for NutraStreet and was Director of Corporate Affairs for Anheuser-Busch You need to know that he passed away, I guess it was April 14th or April 18th, and Dan leaves many legacies in his name, not only with the USC Latino Alumni Association, but Belmont High School Alumni Scholarship Fund. He was one of the original initiators of that fund, as a graduate of Belmont High School. He'll be missed by many people and had many friends, not only in the Los Angeles area, but throughout California and throughout the country. And those people who knew him will bless him.
Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, sad to announce that Mr. Clarence Wallace just passed away. He served the city for 29 years as a parking attendant, so I guess we've seen him one time or another, each and every one of us. He retired in 1998, a resident of my district. He leaves his wife Annie, one son, and three daughters. He contributed significantly to serving the people of the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President and colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Millie Miller. Ms. Miller is one of our, or was one of our senior activists in the community of Alcerino. She lived on Collis, and one of the problems that Collis faces is it's a thoroughfare between South Pasadena and Highland Drive, and people tend to speed down that street, so she was very active in trying to control the speed there, obviously for everyone's safety. Ms. Miller passed away on Easter Sunday, April 23rd. She suffered a fall which broke her hip, along with other serious injuries, and after six hours of surgery, well, she had six hours of surgery, and then she passed away three weeks after the incident. So I ask that we adjourn in memory of her. She survived by her husband Chuck Miller, who I'm sure will continue working with us in the community, and she does have a brother also. Thank you.
Anybody else? Call the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. Have a nice weekend, drive carefully.